Good evening, Cedar Falls. Welcome to our regular council meeting for Monday night, December 18th, 2023. I'll now call this meeting to order with a roll call from Madam Clerk.
Schultz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Harding.
Here.
Gannfield.
Here.
Sires.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
All members present?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if you'll join me, please, if willing and able, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item tonight is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Number four.
Second.
Moved in second. Any council discussion? Any from the public? Okay, they've been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that passes. And Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda revisions tonight?
Yes, item 36 is being removed from the agenda.
Okay, so item 36 was a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a supplemental agreement, number one, to the professional services agreement with FOTH Infrastructure and Environment LLC for additional design services relative to the Union Road reconstruction project. So that will be removed from the agenda for tonight. And we have no special presentations tonight, so that'll take us over to public forum, where speakers will have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics relevant to city business. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in public forum tonight? Good evening, ma'am. Just name and city for the record, please.
Alana Aldrich, Cedar Falls, Iowa.
Good evening. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you so much for being here. And I don't know if you were here, Mr. Mayor, last two weeks ago, but myself and Jim and a large group were here two weeks ago to address the Union Road and First Street intersection. And just a couple of us came back this time. Just kind of wanted to give a thank you to the really prompt and, you know, just very, you know, it was very respectful to the family. He felt just so great about the attention that was given immediately, you know, at the meeting. And the dozens of texts I've gotten, "Hey, I've seen this going on at the corner. Hey, they're doing this. They're doing that." So we just, you know, wanted to say a big heartfelt thank you because you guys took it seriously, and that's much appreciated. But then also, you know, in addition, we just want to make sure that the pressure is still on because I know that this is very largely DOT-related because of, you know, their involvement and their jurisdiction in the intersection. So just want to make sure the pressure is still on, on them, to come up with a longer-term solution that's going to be even more safe than the things that have already been done.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Aldrich. And I would ask for staff, I know we had something for staff updates, a little, they're just next item, but could we talk a little bit about what are the Union Road progress is with the state?
Sure, I can do that right now. I know, I believe Denny has a photo that he's going to show, but I've had multiple conversations with the district office in regards to this intersection. There were some things that we could make as an immediate improvement to the intersection to accommodate for a better site distance. These two photos, the left one was kind of a previous photo. It's looking in the northeasterly direction. The stop bar used to be located kind of directly in front of the streetlight right there. Stop bar was moved in both directions for both northbound and southbound traffic approximately 30 feet closer to the travel lane on Highway 57, which allows the vehicles to see in both directions and to eliminate kind of the creeping effect that we were seeing previously. There was a large amount of trees and brush removed from the southeast corner. We had staff complete some grading work here late last week. We've communicated all these items with the DOT, and they were in approval to the recommended solutions at the time. They are still completing their safety analysis study on the intersection. They originally told me four to six weeks, and that was approximately two weeks ago when I had that initial conversation with them. So I'm hopeful that in the next four weeks, city staff and the DOT will come together to talk about the outcome from their safety analysis. In addition to that, any larger capital improvement projects that we could get programmed in the DOT program have indicated to the DOT that the city would likely be open to financially contributing to larger improvements at that intersection. So right now, I'm waiting for the DOT to reach back out with that information, so.
Thank you very much, Director Shragi. And that outreach from having the members of the public up to the podium two weeks ago was very helpful for us. So being able to show that footage to the DOT and say, "These are citizen concerns," and to have the personal appeals as well and the personal stories, that always helps with giving credence to some of these concerns at the state level. So thank you very much for taking the time to come out for that. Yes, sir. Just name and city for the record, please.
Good evening. Jim Shear. I would echo what Alana said about the attention that's been given to this so far, the things that have been done, which are obviously of a very temporary nature. I guess from our standpoint, we remain very concerned about the safety of the intersection now and about doing something to placate or to obviate the problems that we have and get those corrected in the future. I would also say that to the extent, and I know you folks have a lot on the front burner, but to the extent you can kind of keep this on the front burner and that the new council members and the new mayor may be able to do the same thing too, that would be very much appreciated. And I think the last thing I would request, if it's possible, and to the extent that it is, we have a lot of people that have an interest in this, and we have people coming forward all the time talking about problems they've had that have never really come to our attention or anybody else's. And what we'd like to be able to do in some fashion is have a vehicle for input so that we can kind of listen to and know what's going on on your side of the fence and so that you can hear from us about some of our very specific concerns, which hopefully will equate and be the same thing that you're looking at. But to the extent we can have some input and be kept apprised of what's happening, that would be very much appreciated.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shear.
But thank you for your time and your efforts so far.
Thank you. That staff will take that under advisement for consideration, for that communication tool. So thank you. And thank you also, sir, for your accommodation and for your help in this, since that's your property on the corner, what you've done to allow us to clear brush and have good things happen in that area. It's instrumental, the public-private side, to make that work well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That was Sam Runyon's property on the corner, and Sam was the one that went ahead and allowed us to go in there and clean up the brush and trim along the side. And then I talked, and Chase has been right on this the whole time, and so was Ron. We went out there. It'd be nice to do something on, as you travel south on North Union Road, if we had some rumble strips, would be nice, because that's where this accident kind of occurred. They went through the intersection. And there's a fence there, but the fence is right on the right-of-way, and it's owned by Mary Bogarty. And she's very nice, and I'm not looking for eminent domain or anything on that, but she seemed like she would want to get along to make that safer because when we were out there, Chase and I and Brian Heath, she was very concerned about it too. So if we could look into some of that stuff, that'd be great. And Chase gave me the number of the guys up in Mason City, the DOT. And they seemed very agreeable, whether it was somebody else before. And I asked them, I said, "Was there a study ever done on this?" Because when they put that new road in, it must have been 2012, I figured there was probably a study at that time. And they thought there was, but he wasn't for sure. And he thought, and this is one of the guys, I talked to two guys up from Mason City, that maybe they were going to allow, at that time, "Chase, did you get this too? They were going to allow a four-way stop way back in 2012?"
That was actually before my time, and I don't have that information.
Okay, I was going to try and talk to you about that beforehand because I don't like to blindside you like that. But the DOT, maybe people have changed up there, but they seem very friendly. So with all these things, and I want to thank everybody, Ron and also Chase and Brian Heath, they got right on it, cleaned that up, and it's a tremendous amount better. So that's all. I wanted to thank those guys. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in public comment tonight? Just name and address for the, or city for the record, please.
Alex Escalada, Cedar Falls.
Good evening.
And I'm going to be reading from my phone.
Okay.
"I'm here today to urge the city of Cedar Falls to show solidarity with the Palestinian people and to pass a resolution demanding an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. This act of support would be in harmony with dozen of other U.S. cities that have issued ceasefire resolutions since October 7th, including Oakland and Richmond, California, Providence, Rhode Island, Wilmington, Delaware, President Biden's own hometown, Atlanta, Georgia, Akron, Ohio, and Detroit, Michigan, the largest city, U.S. city to issue such a statement to date. Much more than a symbolic gesture calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire puts real pressure on our government at all levels to denounce the atrocities of one of the worst humanitarian crises of the 21st century, that of which has claimed the lives of nearly 20,000 Palestinians, and to cease any and all aid to those who wish to further it, namely the Israeli government. And more and more people globally are waking up to the senseless violence, killings, and war crimes Israeli Prime Minister Benjamin Netanyahu and the Israeli Defense Force, or IDF, are committing on a daily basis, leading to a rapid loss of public support of Israelis' aggressive offensive in Gaza. Just last week, the United Nations General Assembly voted in an overwhelming majority in favor of a ceasefire. And this weekend, Pope Francis himself declared that the IDF was employing tactics of terrorism when their sniper shot and killed Nahita Khalil Anton and her daughter Samar as they entered a refugee compound at Holy Family Parish. Also this weekend, thousands of Israeli citizens in Tel Aviv protested Netanyahu and his government following the killings of Alan Shemnriis, Yotam Hayim, and Samir Talalka, three Israeli hostages who were approached and shot down by their own IDF soldiers. They were shirtless and were carrying a white sheet with pleas of help written in Hebrew. And lastly, Christian leaders in Bethlehem, the biblical birthplace of Jesus, have canceled all public Christmas celebrations this year. For how can one celebrate Christmas knowing over 8,000 of their neighbors are missing buried under the rubble? That nearly 1.5 million Palestinians in Gaza are internally displaced, unable to return to their homes if there is even a physical home to return to. That hospitals, schools, and refugee camps are indiscriminately bombed and seized. That the vast majority of the people in Gaza have little to no access to fuel, electricity, clean water, food, internet, and sufficient medical care. That the Israeli army has intentionally targeted journalists, writers, educators, medical professionals, the sick and elderly, and even children in their assaults. That there is no one place in Gaza guaranteed to be safe from Israeli bombs, white phosphorus grenades, missiles, and gunfire. As global citizens and representatives of the city of Cedar Falls, it would be a great injustice to ignore the pleas and plights of Palestinians, to carry on business as usual, to deny that our comfort, safety, and freedom here, even in small-town Iowa, are not in part a result of our nation's continued investment and support in conflicts and war efforts such as the one in Gaza. And the people of Cedar Falls will remember your stance on this. The people of Gaza will remember your stance on this. I will remember your stance on this. We must not fail them. Please, speak up and demand a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Gaza. Thank you."
Thank you. And for questions about the appropriateness of a speech like that here in city council chambers, we do have prohibitions. It has to be related to city business. I allowed it because it was clear in that, at the start of that presentation, that this is something that cities across the country are doing, whether or not we agree with it. So as a resolution request, I felt that it was appropriate and allowed for that conversation to come forward. I was careful to listen for comments that were, you know, slanderous attacks, things like that. But there's questions down the road. This was, in my mind, a civic question, civic discussion. So thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in public forum tonight? Yes, please.
I just wanted to express my excitement at the Panthers on Parade pieces on here. I know there's a lot in there, so I don't want to talk individually in each one, but talked with some city staff members, and it just looks like a great initiative, something really cool for the university and for the surrounding communities. And I wanted to express my excitement at that, seeing the TC statues and all the artwork and the really, the creative network that creates here in the Cedar Valley. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hackbar. Anything else for public forum tonight? Any other speakers? Okay, seeing none, then I'll bring this over to staff updates. We recovered Union Road. So Mr. Gaines, is there anything else we want to cover tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. That moves us over to Special Order of Business, where item two is a public hearing on proposed amendments to the city's FY 2024 budget. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so that passes. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications filed on this?
I have no written communications to file, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. With staff comments, we have Lisa Roding, our controller slash treasurer. So the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Tonight's public hearing is the first amendment to our fiscal year 2024 budget, and the amendment is within regards to the Public Works program. And this is due to the timing of the Capitol Project Main Street reconstruction. Details of this were given at a Public Works Committee on November 6th by Director Shragi. And the increase in the expenditures are going to be covered by intergovernmental revenues, grant reimbursements, additional miscellaneous revenues, and cash reserves. Our process for filing the budget amendment is done in the same manner as our budget, and we will file this with the county auditor after tonight's approval. And this is within the Iowa Code, Section 384.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, do we have any public comments tonight on this item? Seeing none, then I'll consider the public hearing closed and bring this over to Part 2E, which is a resolution approving and adopting amendments to the city's FY 2024 budget. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Open for council questions and discussion. Seeing none, then moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that does pass, and that takes us over to Old Business, which is Item 3, Passing Ordinance 3046, amending Chapter 9, Fire Prevention and Protection of the Code of Ordinances Relative to Installation of Post-Indicator Valves Upon Its Third and Final Consideration. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Open for council discussion. Any from the public? So moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that passes as well, and that takes us out of Old Business and into the consent calendar, where these items will be acted upon by a voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Does any council member request to pull an item four through nine? Does anyone from the public request to pull an item from four through nine? Okay, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve those items, four through nine.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, that passes. And that takes us out of the consent calendar, over into the resolution calendar, where these items will be acted upon on a roll call vote in a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. And we're very happy to pull items if the public would like to do that. So does any council member request to pull an item from 10 through 38, with the exception of 36, which was removed?
I'd like to pull 37 and 38.
Okay, so 37 and 38 for Councilmember DeBoer. Any others?
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to pull 16 through 33, but I would like if Mr. Gaines would give us the review of that mascot project.
So I may do you one a little bit better and ask Jennifer Pickar. She's been heading up the project. Go ahead and maybe give us a better update. I might butcher it if I...
Okay, but I got to look at the process here. So we're, you're pulling the item.
Yeah.
So we'll do that at the end. Sorry about that, Jennifer. Okay, so we will pull those items 16 through...
33.
33, thanks, Simon. And...
Mr. Mayor, we could just pull one because that would explain that's the same pretty much the rest of the way down.
Okay, so yeah, that's fine. Let's pull item 16 if that works for you.
Yeah.
And, as I can say, let's just vote them all together, but we'll do just 16 then.
Yes, please. Just for point of order, can we pull the whole group and then take them in aggregate so that just in case somebody wanted to knock it down, you can't approve 17 through 33 and then go and deny only 16? That's not going to happen. I just want to make sure for process. We pull them all and then take them as an aggregate?
That was my original thought.
Yep.
That's how I...
Whatever Mr. Roger thinks is the appropriate.
If an item's pulled, it has to be acted on separately according to our rules. So we'd be going each one along if it's pulled.
If memory serves, we have done that before, where we've combined like substance resolutions and taken them in... Not this many. I mean, that's a large group.
If council wants to pull those items, 16 through 34, all it has to do is make a motion and suspend the rules. Takes a three-quarters vote, and we can do it.
Okay. So is there, what do we have to do first then? Suspend the rules? Okay. So is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Mr. Mayor, I want to suspend the rules for item 16 through 33.
Okay.
Second for motion.
All in favor of the suspension, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll suspend the rules and have them voted on together in aggregate.
So our record's complete then. So items 16 through 34, is it?
33.
33 are pulled. Okay, got it. Thanks.
All right. Okay, 16 through 33 will be seen together. Any others items? Any from the public? Okay, so with that, is there a motion to approve those items on the resolution calendar with the exception of 16 through 33 and then 37 and 38? Is there a motion to approve those other items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So that takes us back to, let's say, item... Oh, boy. Yeah, we'll talk about, I'm not going to read them all, though. Items, well, item 16 through 33 we'll discuss, and the first one, it's a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Alex Miller relative to fiberglass TC mascots for the Pantheron Parade project. And the remaining are similar agreements with other artists. So open for discussion. Or is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Open for discussion.
I'm just looking for, yeah.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. Jennifer Pickar, Tourism and Cultural Programs Manager. Panthers on Parade is a fun community project that we are working on with the University of Northern Iowa. We have 26 sponsors that are each sponsoring a six-foot-tall fiberglass mascot of TC. And we are bringing forward tonight agreements with 18 different artists that are going to work on different embellishments of each of these mascots. Once that is completed, then they will be placed around Cedar Falls in May, and they will be up at least through October in very public places. So the community and our visitors can go around and take their pictures with all of the different mascots. And we're doing a lot of fun promotions around it. So so far, we have 26 sponsors in place. The cost of a sponsorship will help cover the costs of all the artists, the fabrication of the mascots, installation, and some marketing costs. So it will all be covered by sponsorship dollars.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from council? Yes, Councilmember DeBoer?
Well, that was one of the questions we'd gotten an email on, was that the city, although they're fronting this money, the city does get their money back from the sponsorship. Is that right?
Yes. Sponsorship dollars will pay for the whole program.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council on it? Any from the public? Okay, then it's been moved and seconded to approve 16 through 33 and requires a roll call vote.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That is an approval then, and takes us over to item 37, which is a resolution setting January 2nd, 2024, as the date of a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the land use map by changing the designation from low-density residential use, greenways and floodplain use, and neighborhood, commercial, and mixed use to low-density residential use and adjust the greenways and floodplain use of the property located north of Aldrich Elementary School and south of West Green Hill Road. Is there a motion to approve the item?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. With Councilmember DeBoer, you have a question or comment on that?
Yeah, this is 37 and 38 jointly. There's somewhat of a controversial issue in that I've had five or six of the 18 adjoining residents contact me on it. January 2nd, this is just setting the hearing date. January 2nd is the day after a holiday, and it's also on a Tuesday, so it's not our normal meeting date. And so I don't want to give any kind of appearance that this is being done to help a developer with the public unable to attend or not knowing because it's a different date and right after a holiday. So I'd like to ask that this hearing be moved at least back to the next council meeting. I realize that also would be a Tuesday, so it's still not our normal date. But at least it's not right after the Christmas holidays so that people will have had an opportunity to get back if they want to speak on it.
Okay. So would I take a...
An amendment to...
To strike?
To change the date from the January 2nd to, I think that would be the 16th.
Yes, ma'am. So it's been moved to strike January 2nd from this and replace it with January 16th?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on that amendment change? Okay, seeing none?
Oh, I guess, is there any concern that it would, I guess, I just wanted, is there any concern that it would disrupt? I'm not against it. I'm just, is there any concern that it would disrupt any...
Scheduling.
Thing?
No, we're just trying to bring this forward in connection with the agreement for the road connections, and the timing of that was to have things in in December so that things could be moving forward. So I'm not sure how we'll eventually push a construction schedule, but we can certainly accommodate that.
Thank you.
Other questions from council or comments? Any concerns about the amendment date from the public? Okay, so what's on the floor right now is just the amendment to change to January 16th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that's listed as the 16th. With that, you'd mentioned that was a question for 38 as well, Councilmember DeBoer. So would council have any concerns about considering that the amendment for 38 as well, to change that date as well? Any concerns? Any...
Mayor, shall we approve 37 first? Mayor, shall we approve 37 first and then take up 38 separately?
As a separate, okay. Trying to save time, but sounds like probably going to take it longer. So back to the original motion, it's setting January 16 as the date of that public hearing. Any final discussion? Okay, then moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
Dave. Dave. All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that takes us to 38 then, which is the resolution setting January 2, 2024, as the date of the public hearing for proposed rezoning from R1 Residential District and MU, Mixed Use Residential, to RP Planned Residence District, a property located north of Aldrich Elementary School and south of West Green Hill Road. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to change the date from January 2 to January 16 for the public hearing of said...
Second.
Okay, so first motion and seconded for that amendment. Any discussion? Okay, any from the public? All right, so this is just the amendment. All in favor of changing to January 16, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes, and that takes us back to the original motion. Any final discussion? All right, then it requires a roll call vote.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And that takes us out of resolution calendar and over into bills and claims. Is there a motion to approve bills and claims?
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded for December 18. Any discussion? All right, then, any from the public? It's been moved and seconded and requires a roll call vote.
All members voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. And now we'll take any council updates or announcements. There's going to be a few here tonight. Councilmember Sires?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Cedar Falls Operation and Maintenance Division. All those guys worked quickly on the Union Road intersection, Union and First Street. I do have one question. Chase will know this one, it's an easy one. When is 27, I drove up 27th Street the other day and was able to drive all the way through and back, and I had, I've been having, since I live out that way, a lot of people contact me, many per week. They'd like to have that open, because it's kind of an inconvenience. So can you update me on that, please?
Hopefully by the end of the week.
Awesome, that's what it looked like. And then I just have one more thing. This is my last council meeting, and I was honored to serve the citizens of Cedar Falls. I've been able to help some with their city issues, and I've met a lot of terrific citizens. I've always tried to spend your tax dollars wisely. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas. And my final quote was actually taken from Dennis Miller. I don't know if you ever remember back in the 80s when he would do Saturday Night Live News. And I changed it a little bit, but this was my final council meeting, and I am out of here. That's all. I yield.
Any other comments or announcements? Councilmember Harding?
I can't really follow that up with anything any better, so I guess I would just say I was honored to serve as well. This is my last council meeting. And I'd like to just thank the citizens and everyone who supported me. Thank staff, thank the other council members too, because it's a tough job. And it was an honor to be up here with each and every one of you, so thank you. And thanks to Mayor Rob Green for leading and letting me be the pro tem for these last three years. I've really learned a lot, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeBurr?
I guess I'll go too. It was an honor and a privilege to have served the citizens of Cedar Falls the last 20 years. I thank the people of Ward 2 for having elected me six, at least six times. It's really been a privilege, and I really want to thank the staff for all the hard work they do. They don't get nearly enough credit for all the hard work they do. And I wanted to thank John Zalondek. Thank you for the challenge, Cory. This really means a lot to me. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other announcements? Then I'll get to do the final announcement then, would be sort of a farewell address for me as well, since this is my last meeting as mayor. Elected service has truly been the honor of a lifetime. Coming into government in January 2018 as an at-large city councilor, I wouldn't have imagined that six years later I'd be saying farewell after two terms as mayor. During that time, our wonderful city has weathered its fair share of trials and tribulations, including a global pandemic, the public safety controversy, racial unrest, and the year-long remodel and repurposing of City Hall, among others. We successfully navigated those challenges in very large part due to our incredible city staff, from Administrator Gaines to Directors Birdie, Sheets, Rodenbeck, Shragi, and onward to our more than 200 full-time and part-time managers, supervisors, and frontline workers. Every day and night, they're plowing our snow, collecting our trash, policing our streets, managing our finances, guarding our pools, mowing our cemeteries, planning our future. That and so much more, with usually little public thanks. So especially today, as I close out four years as the city's chief executive, I personally say thank you, and on behalf of our 40,000 residents, thank you. It's no secret that council members and I haven't seen eye to eye on some topics. While we've not spoken often outside of the council chambers, I respect the effort they've invested in understanding their council packets twice a month and in their thoughtful engagement with city staff, their fellow council members, and with me at our meetings. As presiding officer, my goal has been to draw out and encourage active dialogue at our meetings so that the public has the opportunity to observe our deliberations. We've made great progress there, and I look forward to seeing Mayor Lottick and the new council continue this important civic tradition of lively and cordial public discussion of important city matters. As we head into 2024 and then into America's 250th birthday, let's keep in mind our local role in the American democratic experiment and model the behaviors that we want to see from our electeds at all levels. In the years ahead, let's seek out compromise where we can find it, not compromising on principles, but negotiating in good faith on the particulars. Our community needs this in order to achieve real and lasting progress. In doing so, you'll provide city staff with clear and actionable direction. And if you can do so with civility, dignity, and respect, you'll be a beacon of civic excellence for our city, state, and nation. Again, it's been a privilege to serve alongside you for the betterment of Cedar Falls, and we must let history be the judge for how well we accomplish this individually and together. I look forward to continuing public service as a city goodwill ambassador through the elected emeritus program and through my work at UNI. Thank you again, neighbors, for the privilege of leading this amazing community we call home. May God bless each of you and our Cedar Falls. Thank you. With that, I will ask for any referrals tonight. No referrals, no surprise. Then in that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn one last time.
So moved.
I had my hand up, you didn't.
What? Oh.
I just wanted to say I had no referrals.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So now entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Happy life.